All right, it's just about seven o'clock. We are live on TV. I have board members present that are going to be here tonight. So before we begin, I'm going to ask everyone to rise and stand for the pledge of allegiance, please. It's to the flag in the back of the room. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Before we get going, I'm going to have the members introduce themselves. We'll start with Kevin.
Kevin Bassett, alternate.
Kathy Mayo.
Bonnie Winona McKinnon.
Teresa Bascom.
Terry Bonzer.
And Mr. Demais will not be here tonight, and Mr. DeRosa is also not going to be here. So I'm going to be seating Kevin for Mr. Demais. And we have two hearings tonight, two public hearings. One, the third case that we have on the agenda, has requested to withdraw. So we'll take care of that when we get there. But the first case is number 24-003 VA Gillespie, 5 Kennison Pond Road. It's an application from William and Donna Gillespie requesting a variance from Article 2, Section C, 2, B, C, and E of the Nottingham zoning ordinance in order to permit the building of a single home, single-family home. The proposed rose frontage is 45 feet, where 200 feet is required by the ordinance. The proposed driveway would serve three residents, where the maximum is stated to be two in the ordinance. The proposed lot does not have an approved septic yet. The property is located at 5 Kennison Pond Road in Nottingham and is identified as Tax Map 32, Lot Number 4. Do we have representatives of this case? Just so you know, we will have you, the order is that we'll have you review your application. The board members will ask questions, then I will open a public hearing. They will ask questions, I close the public hearing, we'll discuss again, and then we will proceed from there, okay? State your name, address, and then review your application, please.
William Gillespie, 30 Forest Street, Rowley.
So do you want to explain, please? Just so you know, I went out there with a number of member of the board to try and find your lot, to understand what your application says, and I was not able to find anything that looked like it was marked, as far as we dare go on that road. It was not exactly easy to traverse.
Okay. The existing lot, which we're discussing, Lot 4, there should have been two boundary markers actually on the driveway that were set there for DOT.
I don't think we got that far. I drove in and I turned, there's a special cut off, it's been cut off, and there's a bit of a turnaround there. I turned in there. How far do you own past that?
Oh, it's on the map. It goes, that is just the entryway. It's 195 feet by 45 feet, and that is for Lot 4.
Right, no, but I went in, I drove in quite a ways.
Oh, you can.
I drove into where, you go up a little bit of a hill, it was cut off, and I turned around there. There was a little bit.
Oh, that goes, you can, it goes.
How much further is it?
Oh, it's over, it's over 12,000 feet.
1,200.
1,200 feet, I'm sorry. Because you can see, you can see the pond from there.
Okay, so.
And then there's.
I didn't know how far it went.
Yeah, and then there's another lot behind it, which is Lot 5. So these lots go back to the late 1800s.
Yeah, I looked at the deeds, it was nay, and there were.
Right, correct. And it was one time owned by the town under tax title. Back in 1972, the owner spun off Lot 16 to one of the relatives. It looks like a Chevron, and it circled Lot 16, 1.5 acres. That was before there was zoning laws. That relative is now the current owner of the property. So the access, the way that it was set up, is that this particular lot goes all the way back to Lot 5, and it has also the road frontage of 45 feet. And what they've always done in the past is, according to one of the deeds, is that they are able to allow passage over the pathway, and that's what it's referred to. Granting right-of-way over the existing path is used in common with others. So the Lot 5 in the back is actually a campground, or is known as a campground. It has an actual building there, and it was known as, I believe, Big Bear Campground. It's Big Four Campground. It has had a permit pulled in the early 2000s, I believe, 2013, for remodel of the existing camp. And that is on record within the town. So what my understanding is, is that the current owner, which is Linda Hodgson, from that Lot 16, she allows passage for the people that live in Lot 5, but she does not plow for them. So in the wintertime, the snow is pushed aside, and they use it seasonal anyway. They have come up in the winter, but they park down the end, and they typically will fudge their way up to get to that, that part of the lot. This particular lot, like I said, was owned by a relative, and when the relative was getting close to death, I believe, they passed it on to her. So she owns this current Lot 4 and Lot 16. So at one time, Lot 16 was part of Lot 4, and so the question of being, is it a road, is it a path? How many can you have on it? It never existed, because all of this was done before the master planning, the zoning rules.
So what are you looking to do?
What I'm looking to do is put a single-family home.
On?
Lot 4.
Lot 4. Okay, so.
Which is the 22 acres.
Lot, Lot 4 is current, does not currently have a house on it.
Correct.
Okay.
It may have some, some time ago, but it does not now. There's nothing you can see there.
Okay, and the 45 feet of road frontage is from Lot 16?
No.
To the drive, to the, to Kennison Pond, or no?
No, the 45-foot frontage belongs with Lot 4.
Oh.
It's all part of that map.
It's obvious.
So what the original, what her relative did was just cut out a parcel of land and sold them, I believe, 1.15 acres.
That's what's on here, yeah, for 16.
Correct.
So you currently own Lot 4?
I do not. That's what this is about. Before I will pass, I want to make sure that I'll be able to build on it. I'll be able to just do reasonable modifications to the existing pathway, driveway, road, lane, whatever we want to call it, before I will pass papers on it. So therefore, it will be buildable.
So was this a conceptual meeting?
No.
No, I think he's.
But he's not the owner.
But I also got a waiver signed off.
Okay.
I am acting on behalf of the owner.
Right, he's got a.
I have a signature.
He's the applicant.
The owner did not wish to pursue to go through this. She is elderly and is unable to do this type of work right now.
Excuse me one second. Kevin, if you look in your packet on the building permit application denial letter from Dale, it says the Gillespies have written authorization to act on behalf of the owner, Linda Hodgson.
Understood.
And it says see attached, but I don't remember seeing it, so.
Little bit sad.
He must have it somewhere in his office. Okay, so the 1.5 acres is carved out of that you own actually, would be owning around it?
Actually, even around, correct. Exactly. So everything you see on that, and it's a little confusing because of that secondary yellow, that Chevron, but all that is the 22 acres. There is some wetland, as you see, in the green corner.
Still his only frontage.
And the existing path goes all the way back to the existing Lot Number 5, which they use seasonal. I have applied to the state for a driveway permit, because they said even though two residents use the permit, no one ever applied for one, and permits go back to the 1930s. So I am waiting to hear from them, but there's also a driveway cut in, and no one seems to know who put it in. There's a culvert pipe there, and there's a little small apron. It looks like the state did it when they did the highway over. But someone put that, that cut in there.
Inside, by your lot?
No, on the road, on the road. I'm sorry. Right near the road entrance.
Right on 152.
Okay.
Yeah, we're on 152. So when you come in, so someone's acknowledged that that is the point of entry.
It's not marked, though. We weren't right by it.
Right, it's not marked.
I actually stopped at the post office and said, "Do you know where Kennison Pond Road is?"
A few years ago, it was overgrown, that you didn't even know there was anything there, and then someone went and cut everything back.
So is this a named road?
Apparently, it's Kennison Pond Road. I don't know, there's no, there's no town road marker on that road.
The town is calling it a private way.
I still ask the same question. We ought to figure that out. Is this a named road?
He just answered.
I assume it is, but.
What was that?
Is this a named town road?
No.
Is it on the tax map? Is it, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera?
It is noted on the tax map.
Huh?
It is noted on the tax map.
Good.
It's Map 32, Lot 4, according to the tax map, on Kennison Pond Road.
But that's physical, there's no name here.
There's no name on it on the road.
I did that for clarity.
Oh, on 152.
No, there's no, no, because it's considered, it's considered a private way.
Right.
It is not, it is not a town road. The town has no responsibility for plowing and maintaining.
They should ask it different. Is it on the town address, or fire, or what am I trying to ask?
Oh, the 911? E 911, do you know? You don't know, okay.
It is on one of the towns.
The thing I'm just driving at is, is this an established way? And if it's on the 911, from the town perspective, it would be, correct?
I assume it is for the house that's.
Well, there is a house out there, so it has to be acknowledged in some way for E 911 to be able to make a call there.
I mean, that road goes way, way back.
I can tell you it's on.
That road goes back.
It's called, it's on the subdivision list, but it's not on the town road list, to answer your question. So the town road list that I took a picture of, it is not on that list, but it's on a subdivision list.
Understood.
But it's not a subdivision.
Understood.
But the one, because I questioned that.
Hopefully, in your future, if this goes through, it gets on the town list.
Yeah, I had questioned that, because it's on subdivision, but it's not on the highway list.
Okay. So they, the people on Lot 5, they already applied, they've applied for a permit to rebuild their car, their building?
Yes, people of Lot 5 did that in 2013, I believe. They put in, it looks like considerable amount of work.
Okay, and then, so it says three, I mean, you're looking for three places off of where you can only have two on a, like a shared driveway, right?
Correct.
So, so those two, the lot that's there now is, exists, so she's one of them, and then Number 5 obviously exists because they rebuilt it. So really, you're asking just to add one more for you.
I'm asking to add one, but at the same time, I'm also asking that it doesn't have to get brought up to a Class 5 standard, because this particular lot has been around for over 100 years.
Yeah, I know, I know, it's old.
So, in saying that, it should have some relief for that, just based upon the fact that, I understand there has to be revisions made and master plans made to control growth, but this lot was not cut in. It was always there. It's not something that just taken, you know, going up on Smoke Street or something like that and carving a new back lot in.
And Kevin, it is, it is listed, he is correct, it is listed in the subdivision regs as a road. I just looked it up.
Okay.
Okay.
That helps?
So it is acknowledged. All right, so we need to take a look at, why don't you go through your application, please, and cover the information you provided, so that it can go on record?
Is that, I'm sorry, you want me to do the narrative on that, or do you just scan it?
No, I'd like you to summarize the narrative of it, please.
Starting from page 2?
Correct.
Supportive information, granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest because granting the variance would allow the residence to be constructed on 22-acre, mostly wooded lot. The addition of one home in Nottingham would not alter the rural character of the town, neighborhood, or threaten the health, safety, or welfare of the community. If the variance were granted, the spare of the ordinance would be observed because this is an existing law prior to the establishment of zoning bylaws. It was not subdivided post-bylaw ordinances. In addition to the single residence and shared driveway does not affect the rural character of the town, or in any way affect the health, safety, convenience, welfare of the citizens of Nottingham. Granting the variance would do substantial justice because the gain to the petitioner is not outweighed by the loss to the general public, since there is no loss to the public. There is a gain to the petitioner who will build a residence, a gain to the seller, and a gain to the abutment property owners who will have low-impact project.
Excuse me.
And improvements to the land. If the variance is granted, the values of the surrounding properties would not be diminished because granting the variance for the single-family home will not diminish the value of the surrounding property due to its limited scale, traditional area design, strategic concealment, and contemplated improvements to the driveway. Unnecessary hardship. Only to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, the denial of the variance would result in unnecessary hardship because no fear in substantial relationship exists between the general public's purpose of the ordinance provision and to the specific application of the provision to the property because, with respect to this particular lot, there is no substantial relationship. The enumerated purpose of Article 1, Section B in the frontage shared driveway requirements because this is a large lot with an unusual shape, and the large lot will be rendered useless by strict adherence to the frontage requirements. And the proposed use is a reasonable one because a single-family home would be low-impact use for the lot, and to the town services, as a majority of the property will remain undeveloped and in use. A subdivision would impact a lot as drastically and change the character of the property. Explain how if the criteria in Subject A are not established and unnecessary hardship will be deemed to exist if, and only if, owning to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area. The property cannot be reasonably used in strict conformance with the ordinance, and a variance is therefore necessary to enable a reasonable use of it. In the event the above is not established, an unnecessary hardship would be created by strict adherence to the applicable zoning rules because the property is distinguished from other comparable properties in the area by its large size, unusual shape. A variance is necessary to enable reasonable use of the land. By William M. Gillespie.
Anybody have any questions?
Is there power down this lane yet?
Correct.
There is.
There is two sets of power, but Eversource couldn't tell me which was which, but there is power, yeah. I tried many times. They wouldn't go out to the site, because I wasn't doing anything to it, but there is power already there.
Does that power continue, does that go over to Lucas Pond Road? I know one power line goes through there somewhere.
There was just two that run up on the left-hand side going up the lot, and one of them goes to Big Bear Campground, or Big Four Campground.
That's where that line goes all the way into that place?
Oh, correct. And the other one, I, I didn't go on its property, so I didn't look any further.
I saw the power, and I was kind of surprised to see it running all the way out.
And they said that there is a, an easement for that, but I didn't find the easement. I'm sure there has to be an easement somewhere, so I can't tell you when it went in, but it was probably before '72.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'm just curious, why denial Number 1, if this is a road that already has 45 feet?
And two houses on it.
Why we, why was it denied by Dale? That's where I saw it, I was driving about it. Is this a road that already exists? Why did he deny it?
Maybe because they only allowed two driveways, two houses.
Well, that's number, that's number 2.
I think the denial comes from the fact that this is a new request, and this is what our zoning ordinance states. So he's, he's looking to go further back with his house, but it's still, he would be owning the lot as it comes in, so that is why it's called.
It is a little confusing, I would agree.
You know, it, it doesn't make sense. Either it is, or it isn't. And that's, that's my quandary, that I have been pondering those, those few days while I was reading this. It's like, how come he did this if this is real? If this ain't real, then he did this.
It is real, it's a real road.
And he ain't here to defend himself.
You're saying he shouldn't have to request a variance to the frontage amount?
Well, I was asking if this is a real road. And, you know, there's some evidence that it might be, and there's some maybe that, you know, is this a real town road? And so.
It's not a town road, it's a private road, but it is acknowledged by the town.
But if it's a real private road, then it's already established to be 45, so why did he do Number 1?
Because he's asking to build a house on the lot, and, and the frontage will not be the 200 feet off of Kennison Pond Road.
But that's all heritage.
From his driveway.
It's heritage.
How much frontage do you need for a backlot? It's only 20 feet. Isn't it 20 feet for a backlot?
But this isn't in that.
It's in the backlot.
In that he has the majority of, his property goes to the beginning.
Yeah.
Well, so does anybody's. Go to the road.
But what I'm saying is, all of this is what he's looking to get, with the exception of this small cutout.
Right, which is already cut out, right?
Correct.
And she owns it, right? The same person?
And it's already a road there.
I agree with you.
Right. So why is?
Why does he even need to ask us?
But, you know, interested in denying Number 1. He did it for a reason, but I don't know why, that's all.
So then 1 and 2 could be fairly well taken care of easily.
I mean, Number 3, sort of ambiguous, you know, yes, he's denying it, but I don't know if we can approve it. There's no septic, you know, because it's hard to.
Excuse me, if I could answer that?
Of course.
The reason why that was done is, once again, I'm not the lot owner. So I wasn't going to put the expense of engineering to, on a lot that I may not be able to even have approved. So we agreed that I would turn in the paperwork for him, he would deny it, and I would, before I got my true building permit, A, I'd have to have this paperwork taken care of by the zoning board for the approval, and then B, he would have to have the septic approved just in case it has to move by regulation from where I already had plotted where the home would go. So I agreed that, yes, I agree that it goes on this.
So he's just deferring that to the planning board? Well, I think it's. Is that what he's really doing? You know, if we globally say, okay, 1, 2, and 3, but they're deferring Number 3 to the planning board?
He's already come before the planning board.
No, I did a conceptual with the planning board.
Correct.
No, no, I meant specifically for septic?
For septic.
Does not go to planning board.
We, we agreed that I would not get a building permit until I had an approved state septic design. But he still put that down because it's missing from my application. So therefore, I'm, I'm not in conformance.
Yeah, he wouldn't need to come to planning board unless he was doing a subdivision, or some other issues. And he already came before planning board with conceptual. I know, because I was at that meeting.
Yes, yes. I said, "Oh, you're doing dual-purpose."
I do. I wear two hats.
So why is Number 3 even in play? I'm just trying to understand, I'm not questioning.
It's actually just to keep track of it, because, so I would know that, just because if this did go through, I don't automatically get a building permit. By leaving it there, it tells everyone that I haven't conformed to the requirements of the building department.
Okay, that makes sense.
So therefore, that's why he put it down, to let you people be aware that he didn't accept the application. He has the application in hand, but in order for us to go forward to see if the ZBA would allow this to occur, he had to put down anything that was incorrect with the application.
Right. But we're not granting a variance on any of that. We're only, we're only talking on the 45 feet in the driveway.
Correct.
Those are something, but they don't matter to us. If you read the variance, that's what I'm drilling down.
Right.
There's nothing there for that part.
Correct.
Okay, so we are only quoting on Number 1 and 2.
Well, really.
That's, that's sort of what the application defines. It says 45 feet and three residences. It does not say anything about lot.
Does fit for bill? No, you're right.
200 by 200 or anything like that. Okay, just trying to be clear.
Any further questions? All right, can I have you step back? Any, I'll open a public hearing. It is now, oop, 7:26. Do I have anybody here who would like to speak for or against this application? Going once, go twice, okay, there's none. I will close the public hearing. It's still 7:26. You can come back up to the table, Mr. Gillespie. Did you enjoy your walk?
Stuck in the back, yes.
Yeah, it's good to get up and move around a little. All right, if there's no further questions, I will entertain a motion.
I would like more clarification on denial Number 1, myself.
Okay.
And I'll just stay there.
Okay. That's not a motion?
I am not ready to make a motion at this time.
I move that we accept case number 24-003 VA Gillespie, 5 Kennison Pond Road, as presented.
Has been a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, that we accept case 24-03 VA Gillespie, 5 Kennison Pond Road, as written. Any further discussion? Then we shall proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And one.
Sustained.
Abstention, okay. So it is 4:01. The application has been approved for the driveway, 45-foot, and the three houses to be serviced on it. Please note you have 30 days where anyone can speak up against this, and so I wouldn't go doing a whole lot of work until your 30 days has passed. But that's, that's up to you.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. And please note the, your reasons for approving, Bonnie, any?
I think it's a reasonable use of 22 acres. And it seems to me that it falls within the guidelines for a backlot, which only requires 20 feet of frontage. Nobody is using any of those other lots as a backlot, and I don't know that this is a backlot to anything, but it's at least within the guidelines for a backlot.
Right.
It is 20 feet.
I mean, it's actually, yeah, it's actually 45 acres, because you, at the other lot in the back, which is 22.
They're the backlot.
Yeah.
Okay, so you have the information you need now? Okay, if you have any further questions, you can.
And I'm here, my reasoning for sustaining.
Yes. Yes. And do you please note that Kevin abstained because he was looking for more information, which we're not really able to provide you on that driveway? Okay. Second case tonight is twenty-four dash zero-zero-four, VA Brady, the Twenty-Eight Case Road. The application is from Matthew Brady requesting a variance from Article Two, Section C, two B of the Nottingham zoning ordinance in order to permit a lot with less than the required road frontage. The proposed lot would be a hundred-and-fifty-nine point one-eight feet, where two-hundred feet is required in the ordinance. The property is located at Twenty-Eight Case Road and Robin Hood Drive in Nottingham, and is identified as Tax Map Nine, Lot Number Two.
Yeah, I just wanted to state, I am, I am in a butter to this lot, but I, will recuse myself if, I don't have to, but I will recuse myself if the applicant wants me to recuse, or one of the butters, or anybody wants me to recuse.
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
He's staying in.
Okay, I just wanted to make it, show on the record, so...
Okay, could the applicant, in your...
Uh, for the record, Peter Landry, Landry Surveying. And in attendance with me tonight is Matthew Brady. He is the nephew of the landowner who could not make it tonight, Dennis Brady. Okay? And Dennis is at Twenty-Eight Case Road in town. Uh, and as you, I don't know, do you have your, the maps that I handed you? Because I want to be talking about that first as a narrative, and then I'll, I'll go down through the five criteria. So, as I mentioned, this property is located at Twenty-Eight Case Road. It has frontage, six-hundred-and-thirty-seven feet of frontage along Case Road, and it has an additional hundred-and-fifty-eight and change frontage on Robin Hood. Now, that hundred-and-fifty-eight is based off of the deed, current deed, which was based off of a couple of surveys that were done forty, forty-five years ago. I only bring that up as a, as a point, I want the, the board to be clear that we are asking for a variance of less than two-hundred feet of frontage, which is the requirement. But this land, that, that frontage hasn't been surveyed yet. And, you know, if we get the variance granted and through the thirty-day appeal process, then this land will get surveyed, and I just wanted to make the board clear that we don't know what the frontage is now. We believe it's less than the two-hundred feet, based on the deed. It will be surveyed, um, but again, we're asking for a variance for less than two-hundred feet with a, basically, an unknown frontage at this point. We believe the deed is correct. We have no reason to believe it isn't, but it hasn't been surveyed, I'm just making that point. I looked at the town, list of town roads, most current listing in the last few years with some of the changes. Again, it's not crystal clear on the list, but Robin Hood Drive is listed as a public way with a small section of it, which is where Matthew has lived his entire life on the southerly end of Robin Hood. They've got that designated as private. So, there's maybe one or, what is it, one or two houses, your dad's house, and maybe one other one that uses...
Four houses there.
Four that use that. But for some reason, that was never part of the, to my knowledge, that was never brought in. It, that's really irrelevant, except for, that's where Matt lives, and it was brought up. And certainly would like to stay in town. And again, he has an opportunity, uh, as a young man in this town, because his uncle owns seventeen acres of land. And it's quite, quite expansive, um, and I'll get into it, it does have some environmental concerns in the wetlands and stuff, but I'm going to go through that. So, we looked at this piece, again, with six-hundred-and-thirty-seven feet of frontage on Case Road. Jeez, why don't we just try to do a conventional subdivision? And put the two-hundred feet down there and meet everything, you know, and not even come to the zoning board and ask for any relief? Well, certainly, we'd like to do that. Um, but looking at, you know, the position of the wetlands through this lot, where the, the upland buildable area is, and the access of having two access points for ingress and egress from Robin Hood and or Case, it just seemed so obvious that we, we have, to get to the buildable area that Matthew would like to choose, it just doesn't make any sense to have to put a four or five-hundred-foot driveway through a wetland, just to meet the zoning ordinance. But again, we'll, we'll talk a little bit more about that. There, again, there is an existing driveway and home on the property. The sketch that you're looking at was derived from a previous survey of the property. And then I took in consideration the wetland area, the flood zone area, and the Aquifer District area from the town resource maps, and superimposed them on here for discussion purposes tonight. I've also got a summary of the zoning dimensions. Again, setbacks in this town for new lots of fifty-foot all around. There are different setbacks from different types of wetlands, very poorly or poorly drained. Those have not been delineated, those will be done as part of the planning board process. Uh, the one thing I did want to point out, which is sometimes overlooked, or found out too late, this area is also classified as an Aquifer District, and an Aquifer District requires a three-acre minimum, rather than a two. So, what we're proposing here is a, you know, down the road through the planning board, after we, if we can get through the frontage issue, is a minimum three-acre lot. Give or take, it may be bigger because of wetlands, we haven't got that far yet. But that's the general shape, the general, uh, just to how we want to, you know, build and where Matthew wants to build his house.
So, um, this is going to be off Robin Hood and not Case, because we went down Case.
The, the frontage is on this lot...
Could not find it. Nothing was marked off.
The frontage that I'm asking for, and I thought it was clear, is off of Robin Hood.
Probably, yeah.
Okay, because the, because the application is listed as off Case.
It is.
Well, the application...
The application, Twenty-Eight Case Road. And we went looking, and looking, and looking, and found nothing, and we're like, you know, if we want to be able to look at this lot, and yet, we can't find it.
Well, I, I have property information, of course, we don't have a street number for Robin Hood. So, just, but it says Twenty-Eight Case Road and Robin Hood.
Yeah, except that when it's listed as Case Road...
Oh.
It's on both, though.
Yeah.
Don't tell me, Peter. Case Road is on there.
I didn't know that would be...
And then, so Kathy and I were, I don't know, we looked, what, ten minutes? Went down one end of Case, came back, sat there.
Did you have the plan?
Yeah, I did.
Okay.
You know, we were looking for it off Case Road, because that's what it says.
Is it Case Road or the tax map?
Case Road is on the tax map. And Robin Hood is on the tax map.
Yeah, but this, that back nine lot, two, may...
That's what the lot is, yeah, right now.
May just be Case Road, and that's why. And then, and then you're just looking, you're just looking for another egress off a different road, so...
Yes, we'd like to, yeah, absolutely, that's, I mean, right, I guess to be, I mean, I think we're past it all, because, I'm sorry you couldn't find the lot, but it, right now, this is not a lot, because we haven't been through the planning board.
I know, but we were looking...
It is Twenty-Eight Case Road.
But when you come before us, we go out and look before our meeting, so that we have an idea.
Should have called me up, I would have told you, because it's, that it's off of Robin Hood. Just, because I thought the plan would...
That's a little too much time, Kathy, hey, Peter!
I didn't know that it wouldn't be clearer, because the plan, to me, but maybe not. But I, okay, well, I'm sorry that happened.
Let's do work with them all the time, I'll bring you into hospitals sometime and see how clear you are on everything.
In the hospital? Yeah, I would, probably wouldn't be, you're right, absolutely. Okay, well, um, it's a very nice, when you do find it, you'll, it's a very nice piece of land. You'll, you'll, you'll probably, if you do go back, if you ever want to look at it, it's, 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 uh, let's see, now, Robin Hood, at this particular point, it is a dead-end road. There's a house, a couple houses across the street, there's one right to the left, as you look at this plan. So, um...
Terry, do you have a question?
No, I was just going to say, Peter, I did find it, but, um...
You found it?
Because you went on Robin Hood.
Well, that's because I'm in a butter, that's all I knew. The, um, that square, the, I was surprised you didn't have a little flagging there, because...
Where?
Well, a, a long way you wanted it. I was, I thought you maybe would flag up my mundos and come down a little bit to give, but I, I mean, I kind of knew where it was. But that square, the big square, where it comes in off of Robin Hood, that line that comes back in, that's that monument, that, there is a flag on that monument, right? The existing monument.
Oh, the, uh, the one you're talking about down, yeah, yeah, the one a little further north. That's that big upright stone monument, that granite, that's there, that's what's marked as that square.
That's that square, yeah.
And it's also, I gave you a copy of the survey.
And then this, um... This frontage, you've got kind of estimated, I mean, that's off the other survey, right?
That's correct.
Right.
Hasn't been verified, uh, plus or minus, kind of close.
I mean, it's not going to be...
But I didn't want it to get, um, here's what I'm nervous, I don't want to, if it was worded, I got a variance for a hundred-and-fifty-eight eighteen, and it's, it's going to come up with something different.
Right. No, I mean, you're not going to come out with fifty feet, so I'm sure you're good there.
But we may not come up with a hundred-and-fifty-eight point one-eight.
Right.
That's all I'm trying to clarify.
Yeah.
So, it's really, the variance would be whatever we end up surveying the frontage as, if it's end up being less than two-hundred.
So, you're going to have a driveway in off that road, I assume?
Oh, yeah, so the whole purpose is to have the driveway, which I probably should have shown, uh, but the zoning requires the driveway to be, the curb got to be within the frontage. So, yes, we would want to bring the driveway.
I didn't know if you were going to do a shared driveway with the other dri, I mean, you could, right?
Yeah, well, that could have been a different, that may have been a different variance. And I would have been asking for a variance to allow me to put a driveway outside of the frontage.
And like you say, you could, you could have extended it all the way to Case Road, two hundred feet, and you wouldn't even be here.
If I did that, but then, then I would, and I thought about that. Then we would have ended up having, and you know how people don't like to share. So, to put it, then we'd be asking for a variance to use the existing driveway to go around the wetland.
Right.
And then, then we leave, uh, if there's not always uncle and nephew with two landowners that might hate each other, that have to share a driveway, and we like to try to avoid that if we can.
So, this is, right, the driveway or roadway, or...
There's a house here, I think.
Yeah, that's...
Right, this is?
That's...
Yeah, that's...
So, this... This, this is what we were looking at on Case Road, or trying to find, and we didn't know.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty hard to find unless you know what you're looking for. You can usually see the mailbox, but the mailbox is kind of tucked behind a hole.
Well, we said that, we're like, how can that be?
Yeah, you, you'll see the driveway, and you're like, is that, is that actually the driveway? Because the house is like, really tucked back there.
Okay, so, Kathy, weren't too crazy.
Okay, so, again, I had pointed out and gave you one copy, there's a, I think there's a forty-some-odd-year-old survey, it looks like it was done in nineteen-eighty, forty-four year, that's part of the package, too.
You mean, it looks like it was done in eighteen-eighty?
Did I say that, I said nineteen-eighty?
Yeah, I know. I said, no, it looks like eighteen-eighty. So tiny.
That was hand-drawn back then.
I know.
I mean, done with a compass and a, and a tape measure.
Could have been, could have been, yeah. Okay, so...
Come on, they had light tables back then.
Okay, so, let's see. It's pretty much covered, I believe, everything I'd like to talk to you guys about, to get you introduced to the law. Um, again, apologize that you couldn't, couldn't drive up on it, but, uh, hopefully, there's enough information with this plan that will, will help you make your decisions. So, maybe the next thing I should go down through the five criteria.
Yes, that's right, just going to ask.
And, uh, so, item one asked, granting this variance would be, would not be contradictory to public interest. Now, I'd like to just say, there'll be no adverse effect to the public interest, but I'm going to give you a little bit more info. Zoning regulations, the reason we have this is to include a minimum lot frontage required for the purpose of allowing ingress and egress or access to the lot from a Class Five or better roadway. Also, the frontage purpose is controlling density and preventing overcrowding, and generally, creating a rectangular lot, since we have two-acre zoning, three-acre in this case, you know, you end up with a two-hundred by four-hundred-foot lot, rectangular or square in, in shape, which is something boards like to look for. So, in this case, allowing less than, like we're asking for, less than the two-hundred-foot of frontage does not have any adverse effect on the public interest. Unless, of course, somebody can prove otherwise. So, number two, if the variance were granted, the spirit of the ordinance would be observed because, again, for the same reasons as I had just mentioned. The purpose of the frontage requirement is to allow access from a town road, controls the density, prevents overcrowding, and generally, creating the rectangular-shaped lots. In addition, and you mentioned it at the la, during the last hearing, the town of Nottingham, and another, as a comparison, does allow what they call backlot subdivisions with certain conditions. And one of the factors, one of the conditions, is they'll allow you to, if you had less than four-hundred feet of frontage and your lot was created as of a certain time, they would allow you to create the second lot with less than two-hundred feet of frontage. It's just written right into the zoning, it's part of the way that we do backlot subdivisions in this town. It's been under requirement for, for many, many years. And I only bring that up because it just, it just sort of indicates, or, or might allude to that really, each lot does not have to have two-hundred feet to gain the access that you need to get into the buildable area of a lot. And the town knows that, because they allow that in a slightly different, uh, section of the zoning under a backlot subdivision, uh, which we do not qualify for, so, and you really, there's four criteria, you have to meet all those, or you can't go that route. But I wanted to bring that up, that the town does allow building on less than two-hundred feet of frontage. So, although it doesn't qualify, uh, if the variance were granted, the outcome of the proposed new law created would be of similar size and shape in keeping with the rural character of the town. Again, being able to get a square or rectangular lot, in this case, three acres in density because of the Aquifer District. So, therefore, uh, keeping in rural character of the town, and therefore, in this case, the spirit of the ordinance would be observed. And three, granting the variance would do substantial justice because, given the special conditions of the lot, uh, and the special conditions being the wetlands, the Aquifer, and, hmm, this, the map show a flood zone boundary going through this property, which is probably not accurate, but, again, another environmental feature to this lot. So, special conditions of this property, the applicant's proposal is the least environmentally impact and less detrimental approach to the public interest of subdividing the property under Nottingham zoning. Nottingham zoning has overlay districts, uh, for wetland conservation, they have them for Aquifer District, and they have flood requirements, all of these are built into the town zoning, because it's important to the townpeople that the, that they protect those environmentally sensitive areas, and that's why they're regulated. And this proposal, uh, shows a less detrimental, a less impact to those areas that the town feels is important enough to put provisions around. So, number four, if the variance is granted, the values of the surrounding property would not be diminished. Okay, the, this property and the surrounding area is currently zoned residential agricultural, as is most of the town, allowing for single-family homes, which is how the applicant intends on using this proposed law. If the variance is granted, and pending, and of course, pending the planning board approval process, which would come second, the town, um, uh, the town has a minimum, also, the town has minimum building codes to assure that a new house built is built to the acceptable standards that the town has already in place. Furthermore, there's additional zoning requirements, uh, without getting into them, the Aquifer District has more strict requirements than, say, just the residential, and that's in place already. Therefore, assuring protection to the neighbors, um, and therefore, lessening the degree of any diminished value. Last one, five, unnecessary hardship, five A. There's a couple of sections in this, in this last, uh, last unnecessary hardship. Owing to special conditions of the property, which I mentioned with the environmental, the, the wetland and the Aquifer. Owing to the special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, denial of this variance would be, result in unnecessary hardship. Another, uh, special condition that I thought was the fact that it had the frontage on two roads. That's not, you don't usually have that, that's usually most lots front on one side of their property, that's just the way of, the nature of it. This one is unique, because we have two access points. So, continue on, uh, five, one. No fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public's purpose of the ordinance provision and the specific application... and the specific application of that provision to the property because the entire property is 17 acres, 638 of contiguous frontage on Case, 158 foot of frontage plus or minus on Robin Hood. Currently on the property, there's an existing single family home, customary improvement, septic well, driveway. In this case, the special feature of the property is the wetland system, as I've mentioned, located along the frontage of Case Road extending toward the rear of the property. This wetland system is further identified and zoned as a wetland conservation area on the overlay district. The wetland system is, these environmentally sensitive areas have been recognized by the town for their importance and significant enough for additional protection through zoning. If the frontage variance request were to be denied and the strict enforcement of the minimum 200 foot frontage, including curb cut, is imposed, then the applicant would be forced to create the new lot with the required frontage along Case Road. This law configuration would require a new driveway be constructed through the wetland system just to meet zoning, which does not seem to serve the purpose in a fair and substantial way. Okay, and number two, the proposed use is a reasonable one because the wetland system location and the configuration of the overall oversized property, specifically the location of the two frontage boundaries or access points, concludes that there is really one reasonable layout for the new lot. This proposed lot layout has no impact or driveway construction through the wetland system, also making the variance request reasonable. And 5B, explain how, if the criteria and sub paragraph A are not established, an unnecessary hardship will be deemed to still exist or exist if, and only if, owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, the property cannot be reasonably used in strict conformance with the ordinance, and a variance is therefore necessary to enable a reasonable use of it. It seems like we just went over that on the, on the one up above, but they asked that question. So, this property is special due to the two separate frontage locations I mentioned, Case Road and Robin Hood, access points. And because of that, this is unique to all the other properties in the surrounding area, I feel. Because, again, all these other lots only have frontage, they might, if it's a corner lot, they might have it on two sides, but generally, most lots have frontage on one side. As mentioned, in order to conform with a 200 foot minimum frontage requirement, a new driveway would have had to have been constructed through the environmentally sensitive, protected wetland system from Case Road to the rear of the property. This would seem unnecessary burden, certainly unreasonable, given the clear alternative if the frontage variance were granted. Period.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any questions? Go ahead.
I haven't been out there, but I'm assuming the, the buildable lot is upland and then it sort of slopes off towards, towards the backside, yeah. And that's, that's why it's, it's ideal to put it right up in this corner.
Absolutely, that's what, that's what we're targeting for, Kevin, yes.
Have you considered at all approaching your neighbors for a little piece? For a lot line adjustment or?
No.
Just try to be?
I haven't.
Just try to be conformal or?
You're talking about?
Well, yeah.
Trigger Bush?
Well, yeah, it's just...
That I think's protected. Got to double check, I thought that was part of, that might have been part of the subdivision, for some reason, I don't know.
It's not for me to say, I was just curious if you would.
Not really, no, I haven't talked to any neighbors.
If you'd considered it.
I considered it.
That it was no way, you know, they, they said no and all that.
We considered, we wanted to go through the variant first before we tried to go through that, those steps.
What we, I thought about it, but with Mundu, the other abutter out here that has frontage, so the question would maybe, could you have got 40 feet or so from a neighbor to, so you wouldn't have to come for the variance? And of course, when I look at Mundu lot, which is on the corner, it's, it's a small lot. You know, so we would be, it's one of these things, we'd have to grab their frontage to get what we need, and then we'd have to make, take some land from the back to make it an equal area, or we'd be here asking for another variance. So, that, you know, I kind of weighed that out and like, decided, well...
Yeah.
We didn't, nobody, I haven't approached them, it didn't seem reasonable to ask them. And I believe there's some improvements along that lot, in that general area, driveway or lawn or something, you know, it's just, the lot wasn't very big to begin with, so I didn't think they were gonna get one of those.
Probability is, is low.
You never know, but I didn't ask.
Okay. So, Madam Chair?
Yes.
How do we approve this? Based upon the uncertainty of, you know, 158, do we tentatively approve it? Pending a, a new number after survey? Do we say plus or minus 10%? We approve it? Because, you know, you know, honestly, it could, you know, what if it's 120? I'm just saying that as a possibility. How do we, how do we do that? Or is that a planning board later thing?
No, it wouldn't be, I don't think it would be a planning board later thing. It would be, you know, what we deem reasonable here, and it's still...
We're approving less than 200 feet, period.
Right, that was what I was requesting. Kevin, just as, just to make, you know, again, this is, this, I included this other survey that was done in 1980 to show, I mean, the surveying company who did this, they've been around from Raymond for years and years and years, very reputable. I mean, can't say that we're gonna match up exactly, but like Terry had mentioned, I would agree. We're probably gonna be within a couple of feet if that, but I can, you know...
I have full confidence.
Right.
It's just how does the board cover that?
Cover it how we can.
And I'm asking Madam Chair what, what she might do to cover that. And, and maybe, you know, a 10% or a 5% kind of number is, would be appropriate.
Correct.
And I'd ask, you know, I'd ask the applicant if, if something like that, you know, because, you know, what if? And what would then happen? You know, if it's 120, 130, whatever.
Would that matter?
Would they have to come back? If we said 10%, that's 15 feet, you know? Just trying to cover. That's why you hired me.
Let's see what...
If it was less than 200, then it's...
Let's see what the rest of the discussion goes on, and then we'll get back to that, okay? Anybody else have any other questions?
I do.
Does that have fun?
So, have you checked the place out for vernal pools?
No.
No? Have you? Matthew, is that your name?
Neither one of us are qualified for that at this point, but that's something that would normally come in during the planning board process.
Okay.
If there are any. But we, no, there hasn't been any wetland flagging or anything at this point. The wetlands were taken from the town resource maps.
Our whole focus needs to be strictly on their request for the driveway part, because I...
Well, the driveway could go through one, that's my point.
The driveway, there's no wet, it's all upland from Robin Hood all the way down over the hill to where I'm showing, to, to wherever the edge of the wetland is. So, there's no crossing of wetlands, there's no vernal pools up in this area. It's probably all sand up in there.
Yeah, it's probably, yeah, it's very nice land.
Yeah, that's why I asked.
It still don't get where the driveway's going in, Terry.
What's that? It would just be here.
Oh, in here?
Yeah.
Okay, because I'm looking at this going right along wetlands.
Off Robin Hood Drive.
This area.
I don't know if you would have, if you would have found it.
Coming through this frontage right here.
I thought it was gonna be a little more flat, I knew where it was.
Okay.
Now, it is Aquifer Zone, you're not planning on keeping more than five chickens, I hope.
Behavior.
Maybe in the freezer.
We had a two night one on that one, remember? That's a different...
We did, we did, that's not re, that. No, I'm...
So, the point is, if you came in off of Case Road, you'd actually have to go uphill to the buildable area.
You'd go, you'd come off Case Road, you'd drop down a little four, five feet, you'd go right through the swamp.
Yeah.
And then you, then you'd come back up, and then you'd be right next to Robin Hood.
Yep.
Any other questions? All right, there are other people here, so I'll have you step aside for a minute. And I'm going to open the public hearing, it's 7:59. Do I have anybody to speak for or against? No? Okay, you can enjoy your walk back. Close the public hearing again.
Where are you in relationship to?
So, we decided to come because we thought also, and just curious and just wondering, we are 21 Case Road, and it's sort of, we know exactly where that driveway is, and that driveway...
Oh, the one, all the way at the end?
Yeah, the dirt drive, the dirt and the mailbox.
You can't really see anything.
So, that brown, we're on, we're at big brown fences, that's our house, so, so we know where that box is, so we could tell when we got the letter, what, but we couldn't quite tell what was going to happen, we read all paperwork, just peep.
So, you guys are right on Case Road, so you know?
Yes, we're 21 Case. So, we weren't sure if there was going to be a driveway cutting through and like it's still, or roads could be taken out, we couldn't like tell, or on Robin Hood. But we did see a state where that dirt, where it is, there's a post, but it's hard, it is hard to find, but we, we are right there, so it's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, it was just a matter of curiosity too.
Yeah, just paying attention to our town.
Absolutely, good to see that, we appreciate that.
We'd like to see what's say too, we don't want to, we didn't know what was gonna happen.
Oh, they only have to take down a few trees, so that's all.
We totally understood everything, it's just a matter of, you know, everybody's dog.
I really like that you don't have to cross any wetlands to build and...
It's all very good land.
You know, there's still this charming piece over here, but it'd be very expensive and not very nice to the swampy area probably, to put a road or a driveway through it.
Good turtles.
And turtles, yes.
Your turtles, yes.
My turtles.
Talk about turtles.
There are turtles in garden.
Yeah, there are lots of them.
Yeah.
All right, so the public hearing has been closed, we're brought back to the board. Any further discussion? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve case number 24-004. To accept the less than 200 foot frontage as stated in the application.
There is a...
I'd like to amend that.
There is a motion to accept case 20, excuse me, 24-004A to accept the less than 200 foot frontage as written. Is there a second?
Actually, Kevin wanted to.
He can't yet, I gotta get the, I gotta get a motion seconded first.
You gotta second it first.
I'll second it.
Okay, seconded by Bonnie. Okay, there's been a motion and seconded, is there any discussion? Now you can discuss.
The actual case says the proposed frontage of 159.8 feet or 200 feet, so it does not say less than 200. This is my first point.
Okay.
It states a value. And I would just like to put a tolerance on that value.
Okay, but the 159.18 is less than 200, so...
Yeah, but...
But, which would be still staying as, so you want...
I hope Mr. Lidry comes in at 163.25. Honestly, you know, but if it's, you know, 142.2, then...
Then, then you would say no? Then you would say no? That, that, that has to be our point at this.
Okay, 82.2. 42.2. You know, there is a limit in which I would say yes and no.
Okay.
And what that limit is, is not part of our discussion tonight. But to accept this, for me to accept this tonight, I think it should have a limit. We, we approved, I mean, this... Because it's stated that this is not a firm surveyed value.
As I was just stating, it hasn't been surveyed.
And that's the only reason why I'm doing this. Okay, if this was a firm number, I would be seconding the emotion. Put it that way. Right, but I mean, we approved... I think you understand, is that, is that, it's, it's just a whatever, that's all. Right, no, I understand, but I mean, I would be a little more nervous if there wasn't a survey already there. And Richie Lad was a very good surveyor, and, you know, I feel that it's probably within a few feet. But I mean, we approved one on the other side, I mean, I know we don't set precedent, but we approved one on the other side of Nottingham Lake, two, three acre lots on 75 feet of frontage, so, I mean, yeah, they knew it was 75 feet, exactly, but, I mean, we, we gave them two lots over there, which, I was willing to give them one, but... So, this is, you know, even if this is a little, it's still 150 feet, it's still twice as much frontage as over there, so...
So, what can we, how do you want to rectify this? Do we, did you want to make an amendment to the motion for a set amount? Or do you want us to vote on the motion as approved and you abstain? What, what would make you...
I would suggest to the board a plus or minus, or a, a minus 10% would be acceptable to me and hopefully the other board members, which would make 159 down to 144-ish.
But it could go either, could go up too, could be, could be more.
Then it's...
But it's still less than 200.
Right, so... Do you want more lots? Minus that, if it goes up.
All right, so is that your amendment proposal? Are you, are you moving to amend the motion to state this, then please do.
I would like to amend the emotion of case number 24.004 VA Bradley on 28 Case Road to accept a, a final surveyed, proposed frontage of 159.8 feet, dot 18 feet, minus 10% when it is formally surveyed.
Is there a second? There is no second, the amendment fails. Okay. So, we're back to the motion from Kathy to accept a less than 200 foot frontage as stated in the application. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we shall proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And one, are you opposed or are you abstaining? Does it matter one way or the other, right? It's not a four.
I know, but...
What would you prefer, Kevin?
I guess I would oppose that motion, so I oppose.
So, it's 4, 1, 0. All right, as you heard us mention earlier, there is a 30 day period where someone can challenge this, so proceed at your own risk on it.
I'm sure Peter's behind a little bit. He won't meet that 30 day thing.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. All right, we still have some business to do for our agenda, so take a look at that. The, um, others, any other business that anybody would like to bring? Do you have any cases coming up?
Nothing new yet, and the deadline is Monday, so we'll see.
Okay.
Keep the door locked.
So, at this point, it looks like there won't be any cases for May, that would be cool. All right, any board or staff updates? Anybody? Doing any conferences or doing the online, is it online thing that's through? Is it NHMA that's doing it online or?
There are a few different ones. I'm sorry, it would take me a second to look.
Okay. Did anybody sign up for anything at this point? No? No? All right. All right, I am looking at possibly going to the SRPC meeting on Friday. It's in Rochester, Stratford Regional Planning Commission. We are currently still members, so I'm going to go and attend to that. And I'll send out a message if I hear of anything that I think is interesting to all of you with that.
Thank you.
All right, and approval of minutes. We have draft minutes in our binder, and they were posted as draft minutes from our March nineteenth meeting. Did anybody look it over, find anything? If not, um.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
To accept the, the minutes of March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four as written.
I'll second it.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded by Kevin and Terry to approve the March nineteenth, twenty, twenty-four minutes as written. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed, oh, it's five oh, we got a five zero zero there on that. All right, if there's nothing further, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned, and the time is eight eleven.